It is covered or it's not? Perfect, it's eight o'clock, we'll call a meeting to order, can everyone stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone.
Let's just open the public here.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anything for public discussion? Otherwise, we'll get to the road vacation here in a little bit. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. Thanks, is there a second? Okay, any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next up is the claims, which are in our packet for June, the claims early here, so any questions on them, otherwise I'd entertain a motion. Okay, thanks, is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carried unanimous. We'll hold our breath for four minutes until eight oh five. Morning. Yeah, that'd be a good time to do that. Thank you. Do we have? Drainage.
Drainage too.
Or just a second copy, do you need this one signed?
No.
That's, that's fine. That's not, I don't have to sign it. I thought we probably need a copy of the drainage ones too, but I can sign them, well, yeah, we'll need them for everyone. Okay, just left Brittany know. Or Marge, Marge might have them. Alright, clock just rolled at eight oh five, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for this road vacation. Okay? Alright, Carter, second. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Nath?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes. Motion carried unanimous, our public hearing is open. Doug, did you want to start off with anything?
Sure, I'll go ahead and, uh, the board set the date for this public hearing by resolution on March twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty-four, it'd be resolution zero-three-twenty-six, twenty-four-zero-two. Notice, uh, was mailed to all landowners that would be adjacent to this roadway and other parties utilities on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Notice was published in Algonah, uh, Kusuthupur, Des Moines, on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the Soy City Herald on May fifteen, twenty twenty-four, and the Bancroft Register on May fifteen, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the engineer's office did not receive any written comments, um, and we do have, uh, we have received some oral comments, and Glenn Preston is here, who would probably be one of the more uh, affected landowners, uh, beings, he is, um, he owns on the north side of the drainage ditch, uh, there. So everything has been, uh, properly notified, uh, for this hearing.
Okay. Glenn, did you want to talk at all, or?
Well, I mean, I don't want to close the whole way, I've got to use that
To cross.
Bridge in order to get across the other side.
Yep.
I do not need it, starting at the property line, but I need two hundred and forty feet from the burning, the top edge on the north side of the ditch. That, that would be all I would need.
To the edge of your grass there? Do you have grass there for two hundred and forty feet?
Yeah, well, part of it's grass, and then it's also going to have to be end roads to get sixteen to get to, uh, field by the northeast, and then the next sixteen is to do the field right along the dirt road.
Okay, yep.
So, but two hundred and forty feet is what I would need.
Okay. Did you hear anything from Steve Colash earlier on the west side?
I talked to Steve. This would have been, oh, sometime prior to, uh, setting the, um, the hearing, sometime in March, and Steve, I had no concerns.
Okay.
And Steve would be able, he, all of his, everything that Steve does with his fields comes from the, uh, three hundred fortieth street, so he uses that south portion, south of the drainage ditch. He does not go north with anything.
Yep. Alright, any, any other questions or comments from the board or public?
There's a culvert across there, correct?
That is correct.
And that's not a bridge.
Part of me.
It's not a bridge. No, it's.
No, it's a, it's a corridor.
Alright. Anything else you have for comments, Doug?
I do not.
Okay.
I do, I put a video in your folder, I don't know if you had a chance, you could, it's pretty clear that, uh, from three hundred fortieth street going north, uh, to the half mile line is in pretty good shape. Uh, once you get past, get north of that half mile, uh, very little drainage, and it appears that there may be some people that go out and, uh, use that road to see whether or not four-wheel drives can, can make it, um. But, uh, it, in my mind, it would be a good, a good solution to, uh, vacate the northern portion of that road and make sure that Glenn gets, keeps the access that he desires.
Move to close hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close hearing. Alright. Roll call vote please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Nath?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes, motion carries.
The motion that I prepared actually vacated the whole roadway, the way the language is. Uh, I would like to, uh, put in this, it was actually a resolution, put in this resolution that we did receive uh, comments from Glenn Preston, and he wanted to, uh, ensure that, uh, he had the access to the CRP's field to the north. Um, so if it would be alright with the board, if we could, uh, if we could, uh, go ahead and table this, I will redo the resolution and have the board pass the resolution for, uh, next week, we'll put it on the agenda here.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, two weeks, if that, if that satisfies the board. Otherwise, I could quickly redo it.
Yeah, I mean, even if you could quickly redo it yet today, we could probably act on it here in a little bit.
Okay, I will, I will certainly make it around, and we will go.
We probably need to have the resolution updated, but it probably wouldn't, I mean, it shouldn't be, we'll be here for a little while.
Okay, if I can come back up a little bit later.
We can handle that later.
In fact, I'd like to just sit in on the, uh, the handbook discussion, so, um, I'll go back down and we'll, we'll look, we'll get this taken care of. And I think I'll just go two hundred and fifty feet north of the ditch, Glenn, to make sure that it's satisfactory.
I appreciate it, Doug, thank you.
Do you, do you want that, like, what will your reference point be?
Well, it'll be.
Be the center of, center of the ditch, or the north, north edge?
It'll start out, it'll be, it's approximately one thousand eight hundred seventy-five feet to the north, top of the north ditch. So, it will be that the road vacation will begin one thousand eight hundred seventy-five plus two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty, excuse me. So that would be two thousand one hundred, two thousand two hundred twenty-five feet north of the southwest corner of section thirty-three, that's where it will begin, and it'll then run north to the northwest, uh, corner of section thirty-three.
Okay, yep. That would work for me.
Okay.
I'll see, you might want to look at the, uh, who you have listed for the chairman of the department.
Uh, I saw that earlier, yes, and I did get that chitter, so yes, sorry, thank you for bringing that up, yes. Alright.
Alright, thanks Doug, we'll come back to that when you have the resolution updated.
Thank you, Glenn, we'll take care of it, do we need to be here for the rest of it?
No, we got.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We'll get it taken care of, thank you.
Alright, next up is the evaluation of the secondary road response to the May twenty and twenty-first weather event.
Uh, yeah, I, I put this on the board's agenda to discuss this a little bit. Uh, last Monday night, Tuesday morning, uh, between Algonah and Wesley, uh, people received anywhere from five to seven, um, even heard some eight-inch totals of rain. Uh, the dedicated employees of the secondary road department arrived to work at six-thirty, and they started their service for the public. Um, checking roads, closing roads that had, uh, water on them. Uh, then in the afternoon, we received, uh, some high winds, some sort of thunderstorm came through, and, uh, we received high winds, again, the road department went out, moved, uh, moved the branches that were, had fallen, the trees that had fallen, got those off the road so citizens could use county roads. Uh, at the transfer station, we actually, our shop, uh, did receive some damage up there, and, uh, so we knew that we needed to get some repair done on that, so the twenty-second, uh, the road department worked together. Uh, our north end foreman and our south end foreman coordinated, uh, work, we knew that mainly was uh, southeast, uh, south and southeast of Algonah and Wesley, we did have some stuff up north of Wesley, but the road department got probably about ninety percent of the roads, uh, gravelled back in shape so they could be used uh, the following day. We, right now, at last count, we had twenty-four locations, uh, again, probably all but four of those were taken care of on Wednesday. Uh, on the twenty-third, we finished up repairing what could be, uh, repaired. Uh, there was a disaster declaration, the engineer's office started, uh, started the documentation that is required for disasters, uh, we started planning for some major repairs and replacements. Uh, I do have some photographs that I'd just like to show of the, uh, two larger, uh, damaged structures, one being right, uh, south of, south and east of Algonah. Gerbers, Dave Gerber, Mike, uh, Coolman own property, but, uh, we actually lost a road culvert. Uh, one section was laying to the west, another section was probably, uh, floated, um, two hundred and fifty yards or so, causing, uh, access, they did not, they do not have any access to their farms, uh, back there, uh, we are hoping that, uh, if we don't get rain today, we're hoping that tomorrow we can get something completed there, a temporary fix, so they can have access to the property. Uh, we also have a, have a bridge, uh, north line of section, uh, four of Laverne, or excuse me, five of Laverne. Uh, you can see in this photograph here, stocks that are backed up, they're actually pushing along the timber stringers of this, uh, structure, uh, water over the banks coming back into the, uh, drainage ditch, uh, we had water over both sides of the road, uh, you can see right in here, I don't know how well, but we had an abutment, we got some sort of a failure back there of the embankment behind the abutment. We did not lose the structure, but we do have some work to do, this is south looking, uh, you can see the water gets back up over the banks, um, but then that bridge is going to take a little bit of work there. So I guess I'm asking, uh, the board for evaluation, if you think we, uh, our job was good enough, uh, if it was not good enough, um, but please let me know, uh, the bridge to Gerbers and Coolman's, uh, we took that out of the program, construction program this year due to uh, funding and not having enough funding to work on bridges in culverts that are located on gravel roads. Uh, this bridge here is one that, uh, uh, we were going to replace, uh, with money from windmills, uh, but we left it as question mark whether or not to do it, or not, or spend that money somewhere else. So I guess I'd just like the board to, uh, at least let us know if we're doing our job adequately.
I didn't receive any complaints from, from the storm.
Can I make a public comment?
Yeah.
So, so we were flooded, our house was flooded, our house in Wesley, our garage in Wesley was flooded. Um, my husband has lived on our road for almost fifty-four years, and this is the first time in fifty-four years we had water in over R fourteen, uh, in two places, north of us and south of us. And that morning, I was, after being up since one-thirty, trying to clean out water in our basement, on our way to work for the board meeting, and I met Matt Slugger and the road grader cleaning off the road, and it just made me more confident to know that we were taken care of and that, you know, we would be able to get to and homework, so, thank you for that, thank you to Matt, and it is very appreciated for what you guys do.
Thank you, Tim.
And there was one time I did an inform, informant of a tree over the road, and it wasn't, probably a half hour later it was done, and that didn't expect that's good, I mean, that's, that's a very quick response, yeah.
May I add into that? So I had talked to Doug to ask for him to put in numbers of what it's going to cost to fix the roads and the damages, so we, I already submitted, um, that we would probably meet our threshold here in the county, which is sixty-eight thousand dollars, considering the amount of flooding that Wesley took in, um, Algonah, their wastewater plant was up and running pretty much twenty-four or seven. Um, and then as well as the county roads, I said like, we're going to meet that sixty-eight thousand threshold, but I do need those pictures too, Doug, as well. As of right now, they did do a federal, uh, federal declaration for Polk Adams, I can't remember the other county. Or, yes, thank you. So as far as receiving and that, I'm not for sure yet, I know that they're still pushing on more numbers, and we didn't raise some figures in, but, um, at this time, I'm assuming we're going to meet that sixty-eight thousand easily. Keeping track of wages, time, equipment for both cities and the county is important.
Do you think there's any money available, checks, the bridges, or anything that was done from the state or federal government?
Uh, the only way would be is if there is a federal declaration, that that would be pop, that I'm aware of at least. Uh, R fourteen, uh, is, is a, uh, classified in a way that if there is damage there, which there was not, uh, state funds would be available for that particular road, it's a, uh, rule collector, so, um, but the other locals, where we received most of our, our damage, are, would have to be some sort of federal declaration. And this is one of the things that road departments in Iowa, counties in Iowa, uh, we have ninety percent of the roads that were damaged, the areas of the damage have been repaired. Uh, we do not necessarily have photographs of the damaged road, and I've been out with the inspectors, the auditors, that are making sure that federal dollars are being spent correctly, and they more or less do not believe that water was over the road, because they see crops on both sides of them, uh, four weeks, or, you know, months later, uh, so, but I, I do, the road department did a heck of a job. Um, I, I want them to know that they're appreciated by the engineer's office, uh, for their work, uh, their service, their call to duty, uh, they take it, they take it serious when these types of events, they take it serious when, every day of work, so. Thank you to the road department.
Yep, thank you. And yeah, I know with FEMA and disaster declarations, photos of the damages, critical for them. Alright, anything further on this topic?
I do not.
Thank you, Doug, thank you.
Thank you.
For workers, thank you.
I will, or we will.
Alright, we are up to construction in the right of way.
Uh, we have two locations, uh, bridge project and resurfacing project, we'd like the board to take action to close the roadway, we'll start about, uh, with the bridge first, that's on the uh, Boldle Wharton Road, P thirty, so this would be closing, uh, that bridge. And again, I believe it's in the public folder.
You're in the board's folder, excuse me.
To put the resolution in, okay?
Well, I was wondering about the resolution he has before, do you want to wait to number that till you pass it?
Yeah, that can probably be number three, that's going to be number one.
I'll move to approve the resolution then.
And that is resolution zero-five, twenty-eight, twenty-four, zero-one? Is there a second to that motion? Okay, thanks. Any, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Nath?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes. Alright, motion carries unanimous. You have another one there, Doug?
Yeah, then this is for the resurfacing, um, actually, some of the resurfacing has started uh, with, uh, some milling and the cold-in-place recycling, so we'd like to close that road, we believe they'll be, uh, working, up, uh, in this area at the end of this week or the beginning of next, next Monday. Thank you.
The next resolution for that is zero-five, twenty-eight, twenty-four, zero-two. Um, I've moved to approve that resolution, is there a second? Okay, thanks. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Nath?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes, motion carries.
Alright, there's that, please, thank you.
Anything else for construction in the right of way, Doug?
Uh, there is none.
Alright. Move to discussion?
Uh, construction was slowed down last week, um, the bridge south of Titanka, uh, the water came up pretty high there, and, uh, they got their work done on Monday, but, uh, the rest of the week, it really didn't get anything, so they continue to form for depport. Uh, the Guntre Bridge, everything is ready for guardrail installation and everything, they should be able to get that work done, uh, soon. Uh, the bridge on the Boldle Wharton Road, they drove the south pier pile, getting ready to pour concrete there. Uh, the resurfacing, we hope that they'll be in the end of this week, or late, uh, early Monday, excuse me. And then we're crack filling on mid-road north of Smith Lake. Quotes for the motor graders, I originally asked for those quotes to be due on June four, uh, moved that back a week, so we got a quote on motor grader, quotes for two loaders, and that'll be on the June eleventh agenda. And I do, I got some zoning work that I'm working on, and we, Kusuth Waste Management Association, as soon as we get that audit, with Tammy said that Elizabeth has talked with her, so financial assurance will be coming up.
I think we got the hard copies in the mail on Friday, so I just am waiting for her electronic copy.
Put that on the agenda for June eleven.
And that's, she's on the agenda to give it to the board on June eleventh also, so.
Okay, great, thank you. And the transfer station, we did receive, or we did have some damage there. And the transfer station, we did receive, or we did have some damage there. Uh, road department employees and transfer station employees were able to, uh, get that repaired. If you're familiar with the shop up there, the whole, the doors, the south wall of that shop in between the doors, that wall come off of it's, uh, off of its seal plate. So we, there were some rotting going on in there. We temporarily patched it, cut the steel off, pulled it back up on top of its seal plate. Um, we have a little bit of work to do, uh, with, uh, with rails on the overhead doors to make them work, um, but we are able to, uh, we're able to get our truck out. That, we're fortunate that no, the only thing that was in there was a truck. We were able to get that out and we're able to function up there, so. Again, thanks to the road guys and the transfer stations for all the work they've done.
All right, anything further for discussion Doug?
No, I do not have anything else.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One, two, one, I think.
One, two, one.
And I don't, um, I haven't gone through the, uh, messages and stuff, but I got contacted by Mark.
Yeah, good morning Todd Carter, in the boardroom. We are ready for you.
Yep, thanks.
Um, Roger, have you visited with Mark about the right of way obstructions in Titanca?
The guy that has them? No. Well, Mark Haverly, yeah.
Yeah, okay. He said he's talked with, uh, I believe both of you guys about that.
Yeah, I've been in discussion with the, the person that has placed the obstruction on the road right of way. However, uh, the road right of way belongs to a different person. The people that purchased that, that, that area's been subdivided. And they have a lot and we have not been up there to show them where their lot line was. Uh, the person that I visited with was, uh, he made a claim that that was his property. So, we have a little bit of a boundary dispute right now. And I need to show them the subdivision, their deed and go from there. If I were to send a, if I were to send a notice out to, um, to remove the obstruction and go to a different part than the person who put it there. And I could certainly do that if the board would like. Well, they put up some decorative, uh, there's a decorative, uh, wagon with a sign on it. It's been there for some year, uh, for some time. I do not feel very excited. It's an issue there, life or death.
Okay.
I award you one.
Okay, so that's on your radar?
Yeah, I just, we're, we've been busy with some construction and we need to get up there and I hope and then there's two property corners that'll make it an easy.
Okay.
An easy definition of where their property lines at.
Okay. Um, also I was by the junkyard along highway nine recently. Have you seen the status up there?
Drove by it this weekend, yes. Yes, that's another one. Uh, if we get caught up, we, uh, go up there and remove that stuff.
Okay, do you have any idea possibly how soon you could possibly address that? Because that looked fairly bad when I went by it.
It is not good, however, we have a lot of work and we will continue to have work with resurfacing up there. Um, our, our road department is, uh, is taking, repairing roads due to weather. Right now we got a, we have brush that we need, that we pushed off of the road. We need to get that loaded up. We continue to, uh, that's our priority, I guess, the roads right now, so.
Okay. And you don't need any further action from the board with that resolution we passed? Okay, just wanted to, okay. All right, anything else that you had, Doug, or anything from the board? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Todd, we are up to discussion on the solar ordinance moratorium.
Solar mor- moratorium, uh, I did the research, um, thought it was going to be on last week, but, um, anyway, the, uh, what I found is that you can put in place a moratorium if it's for the purpose of amending, uh, the zoning ordinance to address this, uh, so, okay? Uh, it looked like to me they spoke of utility scale, uh, operations, uh, for the wholesale and retail selling of electricity. And, uh, you know, can't be indefinite, has to be for a specific period of time, uh, to accomplish the function. When we did the wind ordinance, um, there was a moratorium in place for that. I believe we did six months. So, if the board wants to do that, I've already put together, um, I guess some, a draft moratorium that, uh, I'd finish up and present it to you. It'd be by ordinance amendment, so much the same as what we did on the wind farm.
Is there a maximum timeframe on that or?
No, I think you're limited only by the reasonableness of, uh, what it takes to accomplish the goal, which is to amend the, the, um, the zoning ordinance to address solar. I think back and you sent me Doug, the comp, was it the?
Planning and zoning commission.
Planning and zoning commission, that was in twenty-one.
Uh, earlier, I think even than that.
Was it?
Yeah, the first, um, that, there were multiple moratoriums with wind energy.
Well, and I'm talking about for the solar.
Oh, the solar, that's the comprehensive plan that's taken care of.
That was in twenty-one.
But the, you, with the ordinance, the moratorium need to go before the planning and zoning commission as well, right?
Correct. So what, if that's what this board wants to do, um, I can get with Doug on that and then, uh, get that to him. What's the planning and zoning need?
Uh, on, on.
On need, and when needed, what they call it, PRN.
All righty. Um, well, is.
What is that sample for?
I said Doug knows all the medical.
Well, PRN is a medical, you know that.
So.
Is there any definition to utility scale?
Uh, what, uh, what I come across, quite a few of them deal with, um, primarily the wholesale retail. So if someone wants to put up, you know, uh, for the primary use for two, to, uh, provide electricity for their home or their buildings, farm site, whatever, that's not utility scale.
Okay.
Uh, deals with only a, a limited or small percentage use for the land that it's on, but primarily for the sale, whether it be retail or wholesale, of the electricity. So there's, uh, quite a few of them out there. I've already looked into those two, assuming that's the direction that this board wants to take. Um, they, uh, at least a few of them limited to twenty-five megawatts because it takes, shoot, was it, uh, ten acres to create one kilowatt? I'm not sure if it's ten or one, but there was, it was a large amount in order to get twenty-five. Megawatt, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, let me see. Yeah, as of presently, presently, the, um, it takes, uh, ten acres of land to create one megawatt, uh, output. At least to be, um, and that might have been, that might have increased as far as efficiency. That was in twenty-twenty-three.
The cost.
Should be a change.
Costful though, yeah.
That's a, that's a, that's a large amount of land. Two hundred and fifteen acres. Yeah.
Do you have any, like, any companies Doug, uh, speculating with that?
I've had, I've had two contacts, um.
What size or?
One is, uh, I think it was forty megawatt. And the other one was talking about kind of how Todd was, uh, it was more of a developer going out to see if there was interest, um, in, you know, how people are interested because, you know, that's kind of what they, if people are interested, they'll take land and, and those things will spread out and they just need to connect everything and get it to a substation.
Yeah, well, assuming that the technology's still the same, I mean, even if it's, uh, improved in efficiency, it's still going to be a, a large amount of land.
Yeah.
So the question is that are they going to be under the same taxation schedules as the wind terms?
I have no idea.
And I have no idea on that either. Of course, you know, we were expecting more and then all of a sudden, you know, the state cut that back, so.
Was Sun Best Energy one of the ones that requires?
That, I don't, that didn't mean this time, ring a bell.
I'm just curious, because I know they've been going around, I'm looking at me.
Okay, well, I guess I, I think that'd be a good step to take if you can.
So if you want, then you guys don't meet next Tuesday, so it'd be the following Tuesday. Uh, I can put together, uh, obviously it's not a decision today, but, um, I can put together, um, a moratorium for your review, uh, and if you decide to go with it, um, then you can make that decision on uh, Tuesday, two weeks from today. Go ahead and put it on the agenda if you would.
Do we need to give you direction as far as timeframe, length of moratorium today or?
Well, uh, I mean, it's a discussion. I'll kind of feed off what you say, but, uh, I mean, I don't know how long that process takes. It would be very similar to the, the wind farm, I would assume. Um, same approach, same issue. Uh, six months would probably fit the bill. I don't know what's your input Doug?
It would depend on the time that you feel it's going to take to get the ordinance in place. My, if my memory is correct, uh, when the first moratorium for wind energy, uh, was placed, it was placed, they thought that in six months they would have an ordinance to regulate. So it's kind of, I don't know where, where the board stands in that plan for actually getting an ordinance in place.
Because once we have an ordinance that we want to go with, it takes a month and a half or so to finish out all the legal requirements, publication and all that stuff.
Public hearing?
So. I could see six to nine. I mean, six would, if, if we did something right away, that'd put us straight towards the end of the year. So having a little cushion in there might help, but I could, I could see it being accomplished either yet this year or early next.
We'll have two new board members.
So a little bit extra might be advantageous for them to come on.
Do like an eight month? That would be, well, not her.
Nine would be three quarters of a year.
Yeah, give them a couple of months to be part of it, or a month anyway.
If we had a, if we had a fairly a fairly complete version, um, and did the legal process after they come on, they'd be able to put their input into on any numbers or any last minute things.
So we've had two in court?
Correct.
So they're, I'm starting, I mean, they're beginning to, I need to see if there's any interest out there for people to learn about that.
Another one has, uh, I think has option on property that they are, they've asked for, uh, what is going on, what, what our rules are.
Would this need to go to planning and zoning before the board or after the board?
Planning and zoning would make a recommendation to the board supervisor, so it would go before the board. Before the board supervisor.
Yeah, and so the process then in that two week period, when I did it to you first and then you would call planning and zoning, and then they go through it and make recommendations and then it'll come to the board in two weeks. But will that be enough time for that?
Uh, two weeks from
Today.
Today. Um, that will that would be pushing it. I, I.
Maybe three?
So the board is going to be recommending to the planning and zoning commission that a moratorium be well.
I think planning and zoning made a recommendation for the wind.
Yeah, then they make a recommendation as to the time, um, I guess I would think that would take a little bit more time than that to get that process on.
Because the planning and zoning would go first.
Yes.
So, June nineteenth?
At minimum.
Or six weeks, five weeks.
I mean.
Keeps raining.
I'll get the, uh,
Yeah.
I'll have the meet on a Monday and then the following Tuesday, the board can act on it.
How about like the twenty-fifth of, um, June?
I, I will have to put out, what I usually do is put out an email to the planning and zoning commission, um, and see if they would be available on twenty-fourth. We can certainly shoot for it twenty-fifth.
Okay, well.
So then the twenty-fifth would be the meeting here.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be our board meeting.
And Todd, for the agenda item, can I just put discussion, decision, amend planning and zoning ordinance to address solar or how do you want that worded?
Um, address solar, open moratorium.
Well, I guess that, that should work and if you guys can update us when you got meetings scheduled and all that is coordinated, that'd be great. Anything, anything else for this topic?
Oh, thanks, Doug. I get it on the question.
I can probably get that to you by the end of the week so you can, I didn't have plenty of time or at least the maximum time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Thank you. Thanks everyone. Next up is discussion with our. Next up is discussion with our emergency management coordinator on the building on Phillips Street, emergency response and training complex. Do you want to come up or do you want to sit back there, Chris or? Okay, well, I guess I guess one of the things we had brought to us here two weeks ago was the bill for a dumpster. How much and one of the questions that was discussed then is how much trash is actually accumulated in that building or how regularly or what can you tell us about that?
So it's just on to be dumped when it's full, so it's not on every month they dump. I called, sold my cluster. There's three times I've called in a whole year to have it dumped. It just depends on how many meetings and trainings are in there. There's a lot more in the past. I remember this last month, I think once or twice I gave a last minute to him. But other than that, it's just only when it's full it gets called in. So it just depends on how many meetings or trainings are held in there or?
They're not charging monthly.
No, it's just only to dump it when it's full and I usually wait till it's come full and.
Well, the other question was is there is it all our trashers or people put trash in there?
That's ours EMS and E M S.
You haven't noticed any?
I haven't noticed anything else other than just our bags.
I think the biggest question was was it a monthly expense or was it yeah, for dump?
No, no, it's just only when it needs to be dumped. And if it's minimal amount, sometimes they just bring it back to the office with me. If it's dumpster during, I mean, it's not. But when there's large bags and other big cardboard boxes and materials and things like that, you know, it's kind of.
Okay.
So is that that much? Does somebody just take those bags and bring them up here to these dumpsters and put them there? Just a bag way down again?
It depends on what trains and there's more than others or other equipments haul. There's packages that sometimes EMS brings there, so there's, you know, they have their equipment haul there to unpack it. It's cardboard and other stuff that's I had totally. It's just nice when you're cleaning the building, you have a place to throw all the extra crap, the train, the haul it all the way back to another dumpster.
Well, if they're only charging you when you dump it, then might as well leave it there.
Yeah.
Philly, you got anything or how often you need it, use it?
Well, we just finished a six month class and met twice a week up there. The class started at six P M, so those guys during that class ate up there every night, so we dumped that garbage pretty regularly, so. And over above that, you know, we do have a monthly meetings up there. We're there quite a bit, so we do generate some garbage. I don't really want to haul it somewhere else. As far as paying for it, I mean, that's three times a year. We're talking a hundred and eighty dollars, you know, my responsibility to pay that.
That's more question.
Well, there's a big public using it, filling it up. That's you're like sitting there with people just driving or dumping. I guess that's make sure that doesn't happen.
And I think that's the chance to take on any dumpster that's around town. But it sounds to me like for the most part, that isn't that isn't the factor with this one.
Yeah, it's like the one out here.
Right, and yeah.
Anybody can theoretically throw something in there.
Right.
Can.
There's cameras there. If it's an issue, we should be able to see them.
Right, yeah.
Just leave there for a couple, three days.
Are we gonna continue to pay that supervisor's fund or?
How are we doing the others?
The ones behind the courthouse is through the courthouse, but.
Yeah, I'd have to look to see where that comes out of, but I guess it would come out of the annex or the church or something, but I'd have to look to to check. I'm not sure.
You got one of the records?
No, no.
So are you guys more comfortable with 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 us taking care of that hundred and eighty dollars a year charge then? I mean, is that what the discussion is here?
Well, we didn't order it, so when it came to us, that was we had to figure out which item to take it out of. It is. But we also have meetings in there that we're not informed of, so.
Multiple departments use it. It's a hundred and eighty hundred and eighty dollars. I mean, I guess as long as we're where the dumpster there. I don't see where.
Leave it.
You're not I mean, you're not it's not like you're saving the taxpayers money by having it come out of one place.
Right, no.
And you're paying the utilities out of the supervisor's.
And we we took it out of the utilities line, right?
I think that would be fine with me there.
Okay.
Especially since it's not just E and A, you know, dumping there, we've got EMS, you know, using that building and dumping their stuff there too. That's kind of a shared, you know, space. I think if we.
Building's supposed to be used for good things for the county and that's what it's being used for, so I see no problem with paying for the dumpster.
Okay, that's that's fine with me. But there was another, I don't even know what company was in there when we had an EMS meeting the last time. That was private business here in town, so I don't I don't know if we're.
I can address that. So it's actually Hormel and when we first were able to get in there and use the building, Roger was chair, I had talked to him about that prior to. They do their Hazwafer training in there. I'm a part of that. It's good for me as an emergency manager to know what trainings those companies are doing and I participated throughout the week. Also with their exercise in the building as well. As an emergency manager, it is also my duty to know what they're working on, what their plans are and how their plan their response plans fit into our priority departments, our EMS, as well as my response to a hazard. They're not in there having a party for their company. They're in there learning for hazardous risks. To me, that is also part of the job and part of it, using the building as a response building.
Where did they host it prior to us purchasing that building?
They found different places to host it at. They just came to me and asked back when Roger was chair and it fit because of I was involved with their Hazwafer training, which is hazmat stuff, and it just fit as a emergency response and emergency management partnership.
Any thoughts from the board?
What kind of expenses are to have them in there?
None.
So heating, cooling?
Yeah.
But the heat's on anyway, I mean.
Thermostats are set. When somebody's in the building, they they change to the to a different temperature.
Right.
Well, the problem I have with it is that we allow Hormel to do it, you know, what's to stop other companies from wanting to use that space for their training and stuff too? I mean, are we going to start providing that space for all the companies around here to do their training?
I would say face by face, I would come and talk to you guys if I already had it. Once cleared, I didn't think it was a big deal with Hormel coming back this time.
Is it advantageous for you to have it there so that you know what, like you say, what companies, what what's going on and you know, the quality of their training and the knowledge that you have with them? I mean.
And we're to hand us a partnership, yes.
Well, I think it's good that you're involved with it, but I also don't think that the county should be providing the space for them to hold their training. Be involved with it, yes, but not hosting it, especially if they're not, you know, paying anything to use the building, you know, that is paid for by taxpayer dollars and, you know, instead of just allow private companies to come in and utilize that space without you know, any compensation or or anything like that, I don't know that that's fair for, you know, other companies. Like I said, if you start allowing private companies to come into that buildings to stop from other companies wanting to use that, then where do we say no? And where does it become, well, you allowed the other companies to come in here, why why aren't we allowed to?
If it's used for safety reasons and to coordinate safety protocols throughout the county, what's the issue? It was paid for by ARPA funds, not county tax dollars.
That's county tax dollars that pay the utilities.
Right, and they're taxpayers. People at Hormel, I think they're taxpayers. They're county taxpayers. And the other thing is what what's the actual expense per per month? Like what did it cost for Hormel to come in for a day or two of training or whatever it was? I mean, was it seven hundred dollars or was it more like thirty five because they turned the thermostat on? It's like a hundred and eighty dollars a year for the dumpster. I mean, what 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 kind of money are we talking about here? What's what's our priority? What's our safety? You know, we're looking at safety for the county.
Wow, any any liability issue with the county having other trainings there for other companies coming in?
Pardon?
Is there any liability issues with having other companies come in that are not affiliated with the county?
Well, that's why I'm part of that, so I am in there with them.
Right.
Again, I had to be off and on in the training, but I was there for all of their exercise part. I actually helped facilitate that. And now that with with meeting with them, now I'm doing a tabletop exercise with them as well as their quality insurance person, which I would have probably gotten out of there if I would have ever done those. They've been very good about working with me and getting things done and working on tabletop exercise, so we have a hazard mitigation plan with that.
I don't know. I just I think there's there's a difference between our buildings being used for governmental purposes and private business purposes. And if that's a a requirement of something they have to do on a routine basis, I don't know that that's our responsibility to host for.
My question is, is there a written protocol? Do we have a written protocol on on county buildings and what they can and cannot be used for? Or are we just?
Well, the election center we rent out and there is a charge associated with that for private individuals or private businesses that want to come in.
Okay, is that the only building?
No, the
Nature Center.
Nature Center which people pay rent for that. Public public pays rent for that.
Maybe we need to develop something that's a little more clear.
Write out agreements for the rat of those spaces.
So, I mean, how many people, how many people are in there when you do that?
When they go in there, it's just in shifts because they have to try to hit all their shifts and so many crews that come in.
With how many people?
Um, I'd say there's probably twenty five, thirty maybe. But it wasn't all at one time.
How about your how about the city hall building? You got a meeting there too?
Yeah, I don't know that we've had private entities or anybody asking to use that for any reason like the election center or something like that.
You never hold twenty five people at a time too?
No. I don't know. It's a new hotel out there. Have a conference room.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, they do.
Maybe that's something we need to develop a little more clear policies on, but I think you walk a dangerous line having private businesses in without without a cost for that.
Another issue that I have on it is the liability thing. You know, they are on county property when they're inside that building, you know, what's to stop us from being liable if there's an incident? If we don't have an agreement with that company when they come in to use that facility, the that puts all the liability on the county.
I wouldn't think it'd be any different than the liability than the public coming into the courthouse to do business.
Well, our coverage covers that.
Right, so is there coverage for that building as well?
Not I don't know if there is for other people to be in there. I don't know what it's classified as. We'd have to check with Bridget to see.
Because you you got a liability no matter what.
Right, and I'm I'm sitting here listening to this and my thoughts are, I think we'd want to develop partnerships with private industries as long as it deals with something with public safety or deals with hazmat or that type of training. We're not, you know, allow people to come in there and have a birthday party. We want them to be able to utilize the building. That that's the purpose of it. I'd use it as a sheriff's office. We've had trainings down there in that building. We had void officers come up here. We had thirty to forty officers in there doing trainings. It's our room that isn't big enough. My building over here, I have the state come in, Department of Corrections comes in once a week, DHS comes in once a week. I've got people coming in using our building all the time that our county, they don't pay us nothing. We just utilize the partnership and it even if it's not an investigation, I got DHS comes in and does visits with families so that they have a supervised location for the social workers. I've got Department of Corrections comes in and has public coming in to do their meetings every week. So we have that kind of activity in our buildings all around. I I don't know if this is an issue for you guys or it's an issue for the commission. Because there are elected officials, the commission, there are all of our mayors in the town. I'm an elected official. Isn't the commission responsible for the the going on in that building?
No, it's the supervisor building.
Okay, so then I guess I guess you guys could say we're going to limit it to this type of training. I don't know. I don't think the commission would have a problem with that.
Well, I think we need to develop a policy on it and, you know, potentially have an agreement that states that if they do come in there for, you know, training and stuff like that, joint training with our E M A, that they have an agreement that they sign that, you know, that holds liability from the county if there's any you know, issues or, you know, incidents that happen in there.
Phil, did you have something you were gonna say?
Yeah, um, it's you guys' decision if you want to rent that building out, let people use it or whatever, but remember the purpose of that building is an emergency response and training complex. We filled up that parking lot and I got to get equipment out of there. We're screwed. Roger talked about, you know, when the when the sheriff's department was up there, I went up there, I don't know, two, three times where there's having this training to get equipment out of there. And it was a pain to try to get in there and get stuff, so we have to have some kind of a working agreement that we can still get in the building. And I have supplies in there. I have equipment in there. I have an ambulance in there and Krista has all kinds of stuff. We have to be able to get to that stuff. We have to be able to get it out. One time I went up there, there was a meeting in there. I couldn't get in the door to get equipment out because there was, you know, vehicles parked right in in front of the overhead door, so if you are going to set guidelines, make sure it works so we still can use it for what the building was intended.
Working is definitely an issue down here.
Yeah. I mean, Roger, all the stuff you laid out were they weren't they weren't county uses, particular county employees in particular, but they're still government uses. And I think that's pretty easy to justify when there's other other branches of governmental agencies. I don't I don't see that as an issue at all.
I think it's different than renting the like the nature center for a birthday party or some kind of
Graduation.
Yeah, with yeah, with government agencies coming in, that's not.
It has to be known, no matter what meetings in there, that we have access to that building.
Yeah. Well, you guys that use it and kind of share that space, want to put something together with your thoughts or ideas? kinda share that space, wanna put something together with your thoughts or ideas? How do we wanna handle this to make sure it's clear and consistent for everyone?
I'll put something together with the commission and then everybody else can look at it. Then put their thoughts in, if they don't think it, they can change some wording or whatever needs to be done.
Okay, Phil and Derek and Roger, you able to be involved in that?
Yeah.
How about?
Yeah, especially if she brings it to the commission, that's
Yep.
Next thing we meet, we'll put something together.
Okay, well, see if you can get something put together and bring that back to us for review and we'll address it then. Anything further for this topic here today? If not, we'll move on. Thanks, everyone.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we got a liquor license for a bait. Everyone see that in the packet? I would entertain, okay? All right, thanks. Any discussion? All those in, we just need to, yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Cigarette permits for a bait in Spring Valley, what's next?
I'll move to approve on that.
Okay, here we have us. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Perfect. Next up is the pilot for North Iowa Regional Housing. Did everyone see that in the packet? Any questions or discussion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, I'll second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. There's one, Wellness Committee Minutes. Any, you don't see Donna here?
Nathan Ders, looking at calendar, the, uh, Wellness Day. Obviously. Wellness Screen Day.
Okay, yep. Anything else you wanna say on that Carter or any others?
No.
Um, we can acknowledge those minutes. And is Donna coming over for?
We've got to call extension five hundred.
And we can take a couple minute break.
Hey, good morning Donna, we are ready for you in the boardroom. All right, thanks.
Okay, we're do I need to fill out here?
Okay, um, just sign.
Okay. Okay, perfect, thank you. Doug, did you update that resolution?
I did.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Roger, if you wanna see this. All right, it's what we talked about, so, okay. We can act on that quick.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, um, I read through this over the weekend, but do you need to put per month or per pay period or something?
Per pay period versus, okay, because otherwise it's not really open. You know, usually you need to, the public, the attorneys, attorneys don't even catch that crap.
I, I would've said it earlier.
I'd say per pay period.
Like I say, I think it was Sunday morning I was reading through stuff.
Per, per pay period because, because otherwise the jingles rotates.
Yeah. I don't know.
I don't know.
I mean, it's implied in there, but
Well, implied doesn't give us anywhere.
Sometimes because I, I only missed two in May and one in June.
Right, right. Now I hear.
That's three.
That's good, a three per pay period. Well, it kind of lines up with F M L A or it works like and the three is an F M L A trigger or even work comp, which is not unpaid, but it's three days, so that's
Three days and they lose their insurance coverage that month, is that's what it means?
Yeah. Well, for the
When does it come back into effect?
Once they're up back to full-time status.
So three days you lose your full-time status?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So then you don't come back to full-time until you work a month?
Well, or till you resume full-time, I mean, instead of taking a day off each week.
So what I'm trying to figure out is do you pay one month's premium or two months' premium?
Well, it depends on when you come back. We've
That's not very clear.
Well, I know it's not very clear, but trying to offer, trying to run it the way it was. It just said unpaid, it didn't say one day, five days, twenty days.
Yeah, I just computed.
I know, I'm not saying
Normally, like, you know, I, I worked a month in May, so out of the paycheck for May that I received on June one, uh, healthcare is part of that payload, so that in June goes towards healthcare now. So if in May, if I would have days that would be, that would be not covered, then I would have to pay in June if I worked a whole month, then it's back, it's gonna be okay.
That number.
When does that, can you?
Zero.
Well, if you're qualified, it kicks in right away and this doesn't really apply to
So if F M L A over superseds this paragraph?
We'll do this.
Right, this is only unpaid when you've exhausted.
And you don't have any F M L A available.
Makes more sense, but that's not in here.
I think it's, and that first period, if exhausted, it'll have a simplification comp type or some days in F M L A. So it's only for a narrow window.
Must make it written application, okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, now that everyone's back here, Doug does have the resolution we discussed earlier updated, which is resolution number zero five twenty-eight twenty-four oh three. It describes the portion of the road as, as we discussed earlier, with allowing two hundred and fifty feet for, um, Glen Preston to have access. I would move to approve that resolution, is there a second?
One second.
Okay, is there any Carter, second?
I know.
Um, is there any discussion or questions?
Are you going to continue to maintain that as a level B road?
Yes, yeah, that'll be a minimal maintenance, uh, it does not
Are you gonna barricade across the end of it?
Um, we'll probably just start right there at that, uh, point, two thousand one hundred twenty-five, just putting a road closed sign, hoping that, uh, people will
Stay off.
Stay off of that.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Roll call vote please.
Clap.
Yes.
Jerks, whack jerk.
Yes.
Nat.
Yes.
Sticker.
Yes, and motion carried unanimous, and that is taken care of.
There's that, one there and I'll record that one there.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up is reviewing, approve the addendums to the handbook, sections three, seven, unpaid leave and four, one, group insurance benefits, um. Donna, you wanna?
Yep.
Present on this?
I can jump into that. So, um, basically in preparation for July first, we looked at needing to, um, update section four point one regarding insurance payments, or excuse me, contribution to the premium that was acted on for full-time employees. But in addition to that, we, um, asked Alers and Cooney to look at our unpaid leave policy, section three point seven. I've underlined some of, or the, the changes that, that we discussed with Ann, um, primarily the reason for that was just to clarify, if someone is on family medical leave, they've got a qualifying event, this does not apply. It's only if they're, they do not qualify for F M L A or they've ran out of their paid leave. Um, I think our previous wording in, in this section was interpreted that if you're on F M L A leave, um, if you have no paid time, you would pay. But we're required to during F M L A to pay for the insurance coverage. So that makes, kind of why we're here. The other thing is there really was not a defined when that is triggered. And so it's been very, I guess, I don't think consistent is the right word, it's been difficult to clarify with employees. What, if you are gone, do not have paid time off, when does this trigger your responsibility to pay for insurance? If that makes sense. So I think even, so we were just having a little bit of discussion in the third paragraph, um, it says employees on unpaid leave status of three or more days. Doug's, and I think that's a good idea, we should probably clarify per pay period because of our rolling different pay periods, our three pay periods versus month. So that's what the wording is for section three point seven, the changes. And then basically section four point one, um, is just the, the addition or clarification that the county pays the entire contribution for single employees healthcare coverage and requires employee participation for all full-time and their eligible dependents. Again, these are, really hesitant to add addendums to the handbook, but we're, we're really kind of starting to get ourselves standing into a corner until we get our handbook updated.
Did Ann give you any timeline on that?
No, no, she was very responsive to this, um, but, no.
Okay.
No.
Um, yeah, I can see that we need to get some stuff in place before the new fiscal year starts, um. Besides adding the per pay period, is there anything else I think we need to clarify on top of this? Or any thoughts from the board? Yes. I think that is, per pay period is a good clarification, um.
And I know, I, I know I'm jumping in, I shouldn't even come, I, I know it's, it's difficult for department heads to understand the health benefits, the paying for that when there's an absence, but we've got to have some universal
Yep.
approach to this, otherwise it just gets really difficult for payroll to manage.
How about the, um, three or more days, should that be? Is that? Do we need to define days any further if someone has a half day somewhere in between or anything like? I mean, that might be, just trying to think of scenarios that might come up.
I'm just gonna say it is really a challenge, um.
It is.
It's a challenge, and I guess it's just leaning, you know, or trying to clean up that if you've got three and on the whole day of absence during that, that pay period, we've gotta, we've gotta trigger something, otherwise it just is so spotty and so inconsistent.
Well, and then you'd have the
And I, I guess I will say, our department heads also have tried to work with individuals in these situations to try and allow comp time, to try and put, so outside of that, I think there, it's not like it's, oh my gosh, we've just come to this decision and we're done, it's the
Yep.
lack of clarity when that happens.
And not, not everybody's familiar with what our policy says, you know, that's another thing about, you know, making sure our department heads know what that policy is, which Donna has tried to do and we were hoping department heads would be here this morning, so they'd under, there is a few, there is a few. So they would understand what the change is, um.
Do any of you guys as department heads have any questions or thoughts?
Here, is it tough for you?
Yeah.
We have so many employees here.
You probably get this question every day, I bet.
Yeah.
I, it, unfortunately, you know, it should be not really even something that we tend to have to deal with, but I think it's just to have it clear when, if it does, if and when it does happen, so that there is a defined time versus before it just said, and actually it was kind of interpreted. Yeah, prior to the, um, clarification of not on F M L A leave.
And we have been working with Alers and Cooney and, and getting this clarified, so.
Okay. I guess I, I'm good with the stuff that's proposed for now, um, to get it in before the fiscal year starts, um. If we run into any issues with partial days or any concerns, that way I suppose we could address it when that comes up. Hopefully it isn't an issue.
Unfortunately, you can't prepare for everything and, and some of it's just trying to work out and look at what the situation is, but we need something so that it's not just open-ended.
Yeah.
I think that was the, the reason for putting in the, the days.
Clarification.
Yeah, I think we should approve it as written with, uh,
Well, the clarification for
With clarification.
For pay period.
For pay period, yeah.
So I would move to approve the changes.
Okay.
Second.
You guys are quick today. Um, any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Anything else comes up, let us know.
Well, we'll try and be back three minutes of the whole thing and if I won't go, just quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Jackson March, perfect.
Yes.
You know, I'm pretty surprised. We don't have like twenty drainage or water requests after last week. There's so much water, they can't
Yes, they can't.
They don't know what the issue is, yes.
The ones that have problems are still underwater.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have probably an issue, but we'll have to wait till it dries up a little bit to find out where that issue is.
I know I was by, um, Wedmore here the other day, coming over the weekend and there's still ponds over there.
There's sloping on grain floor again off the north.
How far north?
Um, pretty well towards the top end of grain floor, somebody talked to me, I can't remember.
It's hard to understand.
I told him he made a request. Said it was slopping, I told them to make a request.
Okay.
But there's, there's going to be slopping, um, by west way.
Oh, yeah. And, uh, there was even, they didn't get quite as much rain over west end of Wedmore, but still got a fair amount, and there's slopping on, on P A K one again, too. Some damages there, some culverts that were broke, or not, uh, not culverts, uh, pipes, even.
Yeah.
We're gonna have several places on four and on P K one that I've heard so far that are gonna need some attention, rip, wrap, something.
The lower, lower portions of four that I've been by, I haven't seen anything, um, for damage, so...
I have a question whether there's FEMA repairs available, and there's not, so...
Well, not yet.
For P A K one?
Yeah, and...
And anywhere else?
Yeah, and I did talk to Leon about that, too. Um, we have to wait till it goes through the process. If it does, if we do get a presidential disaster declaration, there would be.
You just gotta have the video and, or photo proof, or, yeah.
Documentation before repairs are made is critical.
Yeah, yeah.
That is very critical.
Washed a fair amount around, there's a bridge, the east side of Wedmore. Well, kinda like Mogler's farm there, that, I think Brian Goodman was part of it, too, but, um, that, that washed out around the bridge there as well. The bridge is fine, it's just, yeah, there's, there's damage along there.
Yeah. But no, we, it's too early right now to know if, if FEMA will be available for this rain event or not.
I would say, uh, landowners, get pictures, document it.
Yeah, yeah. And really, that's one of the kinda nice things about our policy right now, anything over fifteen thousand, we're supposed to have photos and GPS locations and have all that documented anyway. So if contractors are used to that, any substantial repair
Yeah.
should be documented as they do it anyway.
Yeah.
So, that's definitely a piece of the puzzle there. But yeah, I, I know there's other areas of the state that obviously got it worse than us for different reasons, um, the tornadoes and stuff, but, um, I did touch base with Leon, and he said, we're not, we're not to that stage yet. But from the sounds of our conversation before, we might get to that stage. So, anything that does come up here this spring, or this summer, as results from these rains, we need to pay close attention and document. So, with that, I guess we can roll into our discussion about the assessments here with Marge. You wanna start with anything, or board have, anything you guys wanna start with?
Ten-year folder?
Yeah.
And repairs that were done, and, um, estimate what you would like to collect for the outstanding balances that are there.
Yep, um, I guess I can kinda start off with a big one here, um, drain four, we have seven hundred thousand in the assessment column, and I've talked with Leon to get a rough idea of what we may have, um, for money coming from that project yet, which was potentially in the three hundred thousand range, maybe a little more. But, the, the dollar figure that's here is from the previous, um, clean out, so, because we've already received a substantial dollar figure for the FEMA repair we, we just did. But I think we, I think we need to have a public hearing to discuss and inform landowners of what's coming and why it's coming, because the last public hearing we had, we talked about a three hundred thousand dollar assessment for the project that we just completed, and we did that last year. And we are on track to have that, pretty well cover of that project's cost, but what's on the account is, is from the project that happened before that. And I don't, I don't wanna repeat the stuff with drain four, lateral two, and four that we had, where everyone got a surprise assessment. Any thoughts from the board on that? I think just-
You're saying the majority of seven hundred thousands from the clean out that was done by rights old, before you did the-
Yeah.
The two, the two times, and the-
Yeah, the, the two, two-part project, yeah. Yeah, 'cause dollar-wise, um, if you kinda total up what our actual expenses were for this recent FEMA project, and take that off, what we assessed, what we've got from FEMA, and what we expect to get from FEMA, we are pretty well on track with all that. That, that-
To get, to get it straight, there's seven hundred thousand here, and you're saying there's three hundred thousand FEMA yet off of this seven hundred?
No.
No.
No. So, off to the left-hand side, the drain balance is over a million dollars.
Okay.
So, there would still be three hundred thousand on the account that we would expect to get taken care of by finishing out the FEMA project funding and stuff. Because we're responsible for fifteen percent at the end of the day, so that's why we, we did the three hundred thousand based off of our expenses and the fifteen percent that we knew we would be responsible for.
Didn't we collect fifteen percent for them?
That's what I'm saying, last year, our assessment for three hundred thousand was to, to cover that percentage, yeah. And I, I don't remember if we were a little high or a little low on that, but it was, it was close within rounding margin. So, the timing of when those payments come in, um, from FEMA and the other stuff, um, that'll affect interest to a little bit of a degree for the, that total project cost, but when we, um, but the seven hundred thousand that's proposed for an assessment here is from the part one and part two of the projects before the rights old did.
You guys collected for that? I got all the spreadsheets. I don't see how you can say that, I got all the spreadsheets.
Well, this isn't a time for public comment, Joe.
It's, well, fine.
That's why I suggested we have a public hearing. So, I guess that's, that's what I had on drain four for, for the board's information.
You're saying postpone it till they have a public hearing?
No, and we don't, we don't need to act on these today, do we? We have-
You kinda, you can, you can reserve to make an adjustment to one of the assessments, but...
Okay. I was thinking when we had talked, we had another week or two that we could work with it, or review, but-
First to June, we used to have these done.
Okay.
Yeah. It's in the code for name.
Okay. Do you have any, something else there, Roger, or?
No, I, fine with what you're saying.
Okay.
You're gonna, that's a large amount of money to collect, and you're gonna have to explain it.
Yeah, it is.
That was a little lost, you want FEMA paid, you want to, Coonley paid.
Yep. Drain four, lateral four here, we have five hundred and sixty thousand.
We talked about that.
That, we had a public hearing on that.
Right, we've done that.
And we got the response back from insurance and-
We, uh, we're fine with spreading that, I don't, we don't have an option but to spread that.
Yeah.
Do we wanna send out a formal letter to everyone? So they-
Four, that's seven hundred thousand?
No, the lateral, lateral four, where it's five sixty.
We had a meeting on it.
We had a public hearing, but then we haven't sent anything out since we got the insurance response back.
Well, they're not paying anything.
Well, no, but-
The landowners don't know that.
Yeah.
I think we need to inform landowners.
I think it, I think it'd be good to put a simple letter together and, and cop, or and include some of the insurance information, or their, the insurance company's response, and give them a heads-up that this assessment is planned, um, before they get their tax statements.
I, I have no issues with that, that's a good idea, because there's people that are assuming they didn't have to pay it.
Yeah.
And offer the ten-year waiver for
Right.
the large assessment.
Yep.
So, do you wanna have separate motions on some of this?
You can.
So you have it in the minutes that we offer waivers, or you wanna join?
I guess-
I think.
Let's, let's maybe review everything in the spreadsheet first, and then if we wanna go back and make motions, we can probably hit that at the end, if, if that works for you.
You offered ten-year waivers on more than one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Still in here, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
As indicated, yeah.
You didn't offer ten, more than a ten-year waiver on any?
No. So maybe the, uh, drain sixty sub one, is that a twenty? Twenty-year waiver for that project?
Yeah, and that would've, that would've been acted on at the-
That would've acted on at the meeting.
At the meeting.
Yeah, at the meeting, yeah.
What I'm trying to say is that we could offer, you could do quite a bit of it with all, just with one motion, except for drain four or lap four. You got a twenty here.
Yeah, D D, D D twenty.
You'd have to do that one separate.
Which one are you talking about there, Roger?
Your FEMA one.
Drain four opened it?
Yeah. Where you're gonna have a public hearing, you have to have that separate motion.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, we would need a motion to set the public hearing, but we don't have that on the agenda today. So we can, we can just have that in the minutes that we will, we will anticipate scheduling that, I don't think we need a motion for that. But yeah, if you can just have a discussion point in, in the minutes there. Yeah, and do we wanna offer, um, waivers on that, seven hundred thousand? I could probably go either way, I think. I know Mark said, oh, I did not take the waivers last year when we offered it, but it was half the dollar figure, too. And since we offered, since there was waivers on the first, us, first parts of the project, part one and part two, I think it'd probably be good to offer it. And then people can make the decision if they take it or not. Do you have anything else there, Roger? Other, otherwise, one of the-
You got sixty sub one, but that was in the hearing.
Yeah, that was in the hearing.
So that's the only other one that I thought.
We got D D twenty listed to offer a ten-year waiver. Marge or Roger, do you know what that repair was off the top of your head by any chance? That's-
D D twenty, I thought that was an improvement.
Yeah.
The dollar that's there was from a improvement project before?
Yes.
Yes, that didn't get-
That didn't get completely collected.
Okay, um...
That's my recollection.
Do we wanna have a public hearing for that, too? 'Cause that's over fifty thousand. And if it's, if it's from a project they thought was paid for before, it might be, if it's gonna be a similar situation to drain four, lap two and four, some notification might be a good thing. 'Cause that's up by the Union Slough, isn't it? Drain twenty? Isn't that by Antones? I feel like I-
I can't, yeah, I didn't, I thought it was going over by, no, that's eighteen.
Very west, west of Union Slough.
Yeah, on the northern-
West side of the slough, and then-
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's, it's right, right on the northwest side of Antones, and like TJ's Place, and all that's in there. And then the Federal Ground, and that goes through the other, that goes and ties in lower, closer to the headquarters. There's two branches, they're about a mile, or mile and a half.
It dumps in here in the slough.
Yeah, both of them do.
Two, um, I can't think who used to live there.
Are you talking about the north one, or south one?
The south one, on twenty.
That's north of the Stark Place.
Yeah, Stark. Peoples and Buckles, and I don't think they're names, that's two there, one.
Okay, um. I guess if that was an, if that was the improvement project that we're doing the assessment for, what do you think, Roger? You think we should have a public hearing on that? If it's similar to the other-
We're just taking a assessment. Do you have, do you remember, Marge?
I'm not sure, six, maybe six thousand? I'm not sure.
I'm just thinking if we're offering a waiver, that's... And if it's from an improvement project, we probably should have a meeting on that. Any, any thoughts from anyone? Well, I guess since it's in my district, I think it, I think it's probably advantageous to schedule a public hearing for that.
Communication is a little better.
Um...
Put that on the agenda for the eleventh, for set of time?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to-
You're gonna send letters, aren't we?
We'll, we'll probably need to pick a time, or
To set the-
Look, look at the calendar, and then, yeah, we'll have it on the agenda to set the date and time, and, and then send letters.
Marge, you get letters ready?
Yeah.
After we set the date, yeah.
Yep. Yep.
I thought I was saying set the date on the eleventh. Not, not set the date for.
Right.
Yeah, right, right.
As long as we're talking about letters, who's gonna draft the letter to send out to the DD four, lat four landowners?
I didn't hear that.
Tammy's question was who wants to draft or who's gonna draft a letter to send to DD four, lat four?
And DD twenty?
Well, the DD four, lat four is about the public hearing we already had. Um, with the insurance stuff. Do you wanna have Marge draft something and then work with the two of us? Um, since it's.
I can't think of a better way to do it.
Would you be able to do that, Marge?
Sure.
I mean, just get something started and then talk to me and Roger and.
Maybe Tammy doesn't have, understand what's going on.
Well, that's.
Oh, she, yes, I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't wanna draft that one?
It, it happened before.
It happened before I was here, but, but I will help.
I mean, yeah, if you, if you can help, that'd be great too.
And then you guys, I mean, should be involved in it.
Yep, absolutely, yep. And maybe we can put that together for either our next meeting or the following one to. Have the board approve and then we'll formally send that out. Um. For, I guess any, anything else? I'm kinda on the second page here. There's some stuff for drain thirty three. Is that from an improvement project before too? I don't, I don't even know where that drain is.
Yep. That's by tech.
Is that one of yours?
Yep.
Drain thirty, thirty three Roger?
Yeah.
There's North Main, East Main and West Main.
Top of my head, I don't remember what we did, do you, Marge?
It was before me.
Three is on the south side of the town. Where are you guys?
Oh.
There.
Yeah, no, put it wrong, was it?
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one, yeah, woman did.
Is that this one?
I think so.
Do you think there needs to be anything for communication on that one? I, I don't, I don't know nothing about projects, so.
I don't know why it. Got pushed back. I really don't, except it was a disaster project.
Okay.
It was one where they started out on the wrong grade and then dig the tile back up and relay it all because they didn't know the difference between the top of the tile and bottom.
That's a big difference.
Thirty three inches off.
Ouch, okay. Well.
They didn't get very close.
That's good. I would hope not anyway. Um. Did you have any comments or anything on that one Roger? Are you good with it or?
I think I'm good with it.
Okay. Um, second page here, we got sixty sub one. Um, that was all obviously at the hearing and stuff, which. Um. I just roughly added up the dollars you had here, Marge, and I came up with a total nine forty two. Which that's rounding, but our balance is eight seventy one, is that um?
Not with interest.
Not with interest? Okay, that's what I figured.
Yep.
Um. Does this factor in the payment from um?
Yes.
Johansson's? Okay, perfect. Okay, um. Think that's all my questions for that one. That rest of that should be good. And we already approved the waiver for twenty years for that. Sixty, sixty sub three? Do you know what that's for? I don't, don't even know where that sub district is in sixty.
That's another, that uh, the waivers weren't covering what needed to be collected.
Okay. And that was from a project in twenty seventeen?
Yep.
How big of a group of landowners is that? Or where even is that in in sixty? Like where's the sub district at? Do you remember?
I'm not sure if it's in Grant or Ebon or.
Forty thousand? Sub districts aren't always easy to find on here. Sometimes they are, but sometimes they're not. I guess I don't, I don't know anything about the project, but if we're. Sending another assessment on something from seventeen, we. Probably owe it to them to have a discussion on that. I'm, I'm gonna say add that to the list for public hearings.
For sixty sub one.
Sixty sub three.
That wasn't in on the project.
Sixty sub four is the big project we're doing right now, the improvement. That's, that's separate and we're not assessing anything there. Um, sixty sub one is a project that was just completed. We just, we just talked about that assessment, but sixty sub three. Is the next one right under sixty sub one.
Yeah.
And I still don't know where it's at, but. Yeah, a lot of sixties in Grant, but I don't know which, was that a tile system, Marge?
Yes.
Okay, cause a lot of these just say mains. And the laterals, I don't see a sub. But I think sub one, I don't know if that even shows. That just says main. So it might not be labeled on here. I can look, look at the map with you on that later, but. To see who's. Affected landowners on that, but.
Sixty sub three, you, you got twenty year waiver to begin with there, so it must've been a big town, Sergeant.
I'm not sure, yep.
I don't remember it.
That's what I would guess.
Yeah.
It's gotta be close to the state line.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean sixty in general is right up there along the border, um. Drops down about four miles in some places, but.
Mount Verde Farm or no?
It's, it's all close to the border there. And all that water goes north.
You have any idea how many people were involved in that collection of that?
Not for sure.
No, this is where.
No. This is, this is, no, Jack. This is, this is over straight north of Sway City for the Gulf Guard.
West.
The Gulf Guard should be over by Lakota and up.
Yeah. Sixties all over there, north of Sway City.
Yep. It only goes about. Two, three miles east of the Soy City Blacktop P thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I guess. We got. Seventeen and a half thousand for drain eighty with almost fifteen thousand of that being legal fees. Anything else on that page? Um. I had wrote down, we've got um. One thirty two, we've got about forty thousand on the account, but we don't have anything for assessment. There's FEMA repairs listed there, but.
It should cover, when we collect that.
It's expected to cover all of it?
Yep.
Okay. What drain, where's, where's that even at?
It's by, it's.
West Wesley, I think.
Yeah, it's west of Wesley.
Okay.
Is that the one that? You can sink, set a bunch of ground in that one.
Okay, yep, one thirty two. Was that cleaning up the ditch?
It repaired the something.
The, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Came out at uh.
Right, you had the stuff.
Rode it always underwater.
Yeah.
Okay, I remember that one then.
Yeah, and it wasn't underwater anymore this time. That used to be the first one that flooded. So tile must've worked.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little bigger, that's like a sixty inch or anything.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
People said they walked it up.
That was, that was on eighty four. That was on eighty four. But yeah, that was a big one. Which that would only be. Well, how far over is that, I guess?
I'm looking at west of here, yeah, one thirty two.
Oh, it's side by side.
Just west of town, eighty four is right next door to the west.
Yeah.
A very big one.
Okay, um. One fifty nine, I had the same thing, we got twenty five there, but you expect that to be covered by FEMA repairs?
Right.
Okay. Where's that one?
That's up north.
Is that in my district or?
Yes.
Where's that at?
Big town, Ebon, Slaya, I don't know. I don't know without looking.
Just trying to remember what we even did on that.
Elrjonin, broken tile.
Oh, was that by Bancroft?
Could be. So there, here we see.
Um. Yep, that's right, yep. Okay. Yep, I know what we did there. All right, um. Then I guess the last page, we got. Joint drains listed. And those are also in those other files.
Where is B A K sixty one located?
That's a trustee district with Palo Alto County. It's a private trustee.
Okay.
I just listed it here because it's joint.
Okay. I mean, there's nothing listed for it.
Right.
I was just curious.
Yep.
Any other? Questions, comments, anything for? The rest of this here? Otherwise, do Roger, you think motion to set the ten year waivers for those drains?
I've included in the motion to approve the ten years waivers as presented in the proposal.
Okay.
Is it already listed on there, the ten year waivers?
They're in a couple of different spots, but yeah, March, March has them laid out.
Make that motion.
Yes.
At some time, so we just want to involve it in the motion.
You want that in? Within the motion to approve the assessments or a separate motion?
I think we could do it all on one.
As indicated.
Okay. Um. Well, if that's the case, I would entertain a motion to approve the fall assessment schedule as presented.
Can I write down what I have so that I? This is what I have, approved twenty twenty, twenty four drainage assessments and ten year waivers as indicated with additional. Requirements as follows, hold public hearings for DD four, DD twenty, DD sixty sub three and send a letter to landowners on DD four, lat four.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Yep.
And to approve the ten year waivers were.
Yeah, I had that.
Yep, yep. All right, um.
Is this for joint and or just the regular?
The joint ones, I think we have to do the resolution separately.
Okay.
If Roger, would you make that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? Questions, comments, anything? All right, roll call vote please.
Class?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Wackler?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes. Motion carrying unanimous? All right, um. Joint ones.
We have to have a resolution to approve the joint ones. Period.
Yeah.
March, yeah, maybe.
Yep.
It's in the packet.
Yep.
Do you have copies of those or do we need to print copies real quick?
No. I think I have them too here. I have some too.
Three of them, yeah, but one of the big will.
Four.
Hand cop.
Okay, um, so the first one we'll do is E K two, lateral B B. Total dollar amount is fourteen seventy five. So that's five sixteen and twenty five cents to Kusud. Nine fifty eight and seventy five cents to Emmett. Um, and this is resolution number zero five twenty eight zero four. Or five twenty eight twenty four zero four. Um, any? Discussion on that or questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve that resolution. Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Class?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Wackler?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes. Next one is for E K five, this is. Next one is for E K five. This is resolution number zero five twenty-eight twenty-four zero five, with a thousand dollars levied, which comes out to five oh eight and forty cents for Kasu. Emmett is four ninety-one and sixty cents. Any questions on this resolution? If not, I would move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks. Any discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Plats?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whack jerk?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes. Motion carried, thank you. Next one is resolution number zero five twenty-eight twenty-four zero six. This is for H K five eighty-seven, dash eighty-seven. Total dollar amount is a thousand dollars with eight hundred being paid by Kasu, two hundred by Emmett. Um. I would, or, that should be Hancock.
Is that wrong?
Yeah.
I took her.
Yeah, it got the wrong county in.
Yeah. Yeah, two hundred by Emmett.
Okay.
Do you want me to just scratch this quicker?
Oh, it says in the line rip up to supervisors of Kasu and Emmett counties.
Yeah, just, okay.
Yeah, we'll just have to clean up those typos.
Yeah.
Um, but the dollar amount's the same and all that, um. So we'll, we'll get that changed, but is there any other questions, comments, or discussion? Otherwise, okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Plats?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whack jerk?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes. Motion carried unanimous. All right. I believe we have all the joint drains taken care of. Perfect. You want me to sign these?
Yes, please.
You want me to sign a new copy after we purchase?
Are you gonna retype that one, or are you?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll sign it when you're done there.
Okay.
It'll be fine.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Um. All right. Repair requests. Looks like we got one here. Roger, I think you're the winner.
Thank you. We all want to come, Peterson. It's on thirty-three East Main. It's the old thirty-three tile district. And it's either plugged broken or a tree rust. I haven't decided yet whether it's done or not. I checked some intakes in the road ditch and there's no drainage more than the dirt road.
Okay.
So we'll have to do some digging and it's in, says our Federal Reserve, three, three ground there, south of Tyke.
Okay.
So we might have some issues in there. We'll figure it out. Uh, Brant's gonna do some a little bit.
Those supervisors take care of the requests. Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
There's a grove planted on top of the main tile.
Ooh.
Oh, ouch.
Yeah, might need to.
Well, that's better than a silo that I had last time.
Yeah, might need to address that. All right, we are up to discussion with our auditor.
Okay, reminder.
Thank you, Marge. Or anything, anything further for Marge? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reminder tomorrow morning is the Kasu Palo Alto County Economic Development Intern Breakfast at seven thirty at Columbia Vet Center. Um, and no meeting next week due to primary election. Um, and for the week after that, um, we'll be talking to Elizabeth with Gardner and Thompson. She'll be presenting our audit report for fiscal year twenty-three. And then we'll also be awarding the contract of services for fiscal years twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six at that time. So far, we don't have any yet, so. Um, but we'll be doing that on the eleventh as well. Um, primary election, week from today, we'll be delivering election equipment, getting ready for that. Um, absentee voting is going strong, so remember you can absentee vote at our counter until June third. Um, just a reminder, uh, you need to still appoint somebody to the N R I H Board and um, North Iowa Area Council of Government, so, um. Keep looking for somebody. Um, it's been a while now that we've had those, so, um, keep doing that and then that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Jack?
I have anything else to say. Well, yeah, the right order to say. Roger, anything?
Okay.
Nothing. I, as the North Iowa Community Action meeting last Wednesday, postponed to Wednesday, um. It was, kind of the biggest thing was, they've been an organization for sixty years, so they had a celebration dinner, a barbecue and stuff, ordering for people. And, uh, as far as business, though, um, changed, made some changes to funding, um, when things were coming out. Did get a report on the Community Services Block Grant. Uh, that totaled about three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars that was received through, will be received through the end of the year. Um. Also received about forty-eight thousand dollars in low-income energy assistance, ARCA money. Um, made a couple other changes to programs, so nothing, we're scattering, but. All right, that was. Sounds about high of your career connections this afternoon.
Okay. Um, I had C I J D C last Friday, um. We did have quite a long meeting and a bunch of discussion. A couple things highlight, we did have a strong financial year last year and we are going to reduce our member rates for detention down to a hundred and twenty dollars a day. So we're actually going down twenty bucks a day on.
It's gonna be half of.
What?
It'll be half of what you're charging.
Um, well, I think they just charge a flat dollar amount, but they're, they're actually the expenses they turn into the state are not quite double what ours are um, for very similar amounts of service, so, yeah, we are substantially different than some other centers that way, but, um, transportation's on top of that, but that's, that's a nice highlight to be able to reduce rates, so.
Anything?
That doesn't happen anywhere these days.
Not very often, um.
Except your propane bill will end up in the snow and it might feel really cold.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, um. So. Nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We're adjourned at ten nineteen. Thank you, everyone.